Good afternoon. The Board of Trustees' regular meeting is called to order at 4:31 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 of the agenda, and we will ask at each item for public comment. Catherine, will you please do roll call?
Yes, Trustee Baker? Here. Student Trustee Jorge Alejandro Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Rios?
Here.
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee Kishinev?
Here.
Trustee Deluna is running late. Trustee Iverson? And Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Thank you.
We will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We will go to adopting the agenda. Any changes? I am looking around and seeing none and no objections. And we will adopt by consensus. And moved on to public comment for closed session items, devoting up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. I haven't received any either. So at this time, the board will move into closed session covering Item 4.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators, 4.2, Employment of a Public Employee, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, and return at 5:30 PM. Okay? The Board of Trustees will return from closed session at approximately 5:31 PM. There's nothing to announce for closed session. And we'll move to general public comment. This is an opportunity governed by the Brown Act by definition. This is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The Brown Act Board is not able to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject that is not appearing as the agenda item for tonight's meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. I have not received any public comments. Catherine, have you received any public comments?
No, no public comment.
Okay, then we will move to consent. Are there any changes or questions? Seeing none, I will ask for any public comment on our consent calendar. I have not received any.
No public comment.
And I see no hands up in the crowd tonight, so I would welcome a motion to approve consent.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Rios, and thank you, Trustee Deluna, for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will adopt consent unanimously. And move to a wonderful presentation that is coming before us on ACCJC action items and our comprehensive review of those action items. Dr. Arnold?
Wow, that came up quickly. Good evening, Board. Since your meeting in January, we have received notification regarding the action that the ACCJC took on our comprehensive review. And I know Dr. Powell has kept you all apprised of that since your meeting in January. But it is on the agenda tonight to formally acknowledge receipt of the action letter and the peer review team's report to broadly communicate the results and to outline what it means and expectations for moving forward. So the action letter and the peer review team report were attached to the agenda item. Hopefully, you have time to delve into that. Let's see, next slide, please, Catherine. Okay, so the accreditation cycle is seven years, and the action letter conveys that the ACCJC moved to reaffirm our accreditation for 18 months of that seven-year cycle. We are required to submit a follow-up report by March 1st, 2024, and have a site visit subsequent to that. As indicated at the bottom of this slide, this is taken from the ACCJC's Policy on Commission Actions on Institutions. Reaffirm accreditation for 18 months with a follow-up report indicates that we did have significant deficiencies, as noted in that paragraph there. This is particularly for our new board members. I want to emphasize that we have been here before. So MVC's accreditation history has been good. I think that we are one of the few California community colleges that has not been on sanction ever. So I think I have no doubt that we will again use this as an opportunity to guide our improvements and ensure continuous improvement. Next slide, please. Okay, so the action letter identifies six requirements that we need to address. And I'll say that there are no surprises here, as I think Dr. Powell has communicated to the campus community since we received our court inquiries. These six college requirements do reflect the court inquiries that we received from our team back in March of last year. And they also reflect the findings that we self-identified in our ICER. So the broad areas that are associated, or these six college requirements, cover a few broad areas, including review, planning, and evaluation. And I use that to characterize the first two of those six. Resource allocation to address short and long-term needs that I would align with requirements three and four. And then finally, governance and roles in decision-making. And that pertains to requirements five and six. Next slide. So the requirement components of the follow-up report include that we are to describe what we've done to resolve each of the six issues. And that's done through both narrative of the follow-up report and the associated evidence. We are to demonstrate that the standards are met, all the standards that are cited within those college requirements. And finally, we are to describe how the changes are sustainable and what we'll do to ensure that they are sustainable so we continue to meet those standards. And final slide, thank you. So the general timeline is projected here. And this was developed by basically working backwards from the March 1st, 2024 due date. So I'm going to start at the top here. So the first is to maintain momentum. And the date of December to 2021 is because that's when we submitted our ICER for the team and the ACCJC. So it's been more than a year now. And so we will maintain the momentum by implementing improvements, compiling new evidence, and drafting the follow-up report between now and I'd say at least through the fall semester. The snapshot date that we've identified is December 15th. And what that represents is the date that all evidence to support the narrative would be submitted to me to draft, that I can use it to inform the drafting of the follow-up report. We anticipate that the draft will be completed in January of 2024, so it can then be shared with the campus community before coming to the board for approval in February of next year. So that's approximately one year from now. So then we will submit the report by March 1st, and then schedule that we'll work with ACCJC and our team to get the site visit scheduled subsequent to that. There's one item that I didn't put on the timeline, so I want to call your attention to that now. One that's missing is the action by the ACCJC based on our follow-up report. And that will occur in June of 2024. So there will be an opportunity to discuss this in more detail at the retreat. So this is just intended as an overview. And again, I'd encourage you, if you haven't already, to read through the action letter and particularly the paragraphs pertaining to each of the standards cited within the six requirements. In the meantime, we will be giving regular updates to the Accreditation Steering Committee, the Board of Trustees, and the campus community over the next year. So everyone will be informed of what's being done to implement improvements. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold. Any comments or questions? Thank you for everything, Dr. Arnold. And we will go to an action item 8.2, a resolution declaring termination of a local emergency. This resolution ends a local emergency that we put into place approximately, I think, three years ago. And with it, you know, Board Policy 2718, a telecommunion will also expire with it. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not have public comment.
I have not received any either, and don't see anybody in the crowd. Any questions? Yeah, yeah, no. Trustee Baker's asked whether we should all knock it away before we do this, which is not a bad idea. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd welcome a motion for approval.
I'll move.
Trustee Kishinev?
Okay, okay.
And thank you, Trustee Deluna, for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This resolution is adopted unanimously. For 8.9.1, actually, very good action item before us this evening, consideration to enter into an employment agreement prior to considering this matter as required under Government Code Section 54953, Subsection C3. I will summarize the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract of educational administrator. The district is entering into an employment agreement with Priscilla Moore as Assistant Superintendent VP of Academic Affairs, beginning March 13, 2023, through March 12, 2026, March 13, 2023, through December 31, 2023. Ms. Moore will receive a monthly salary at range 3, Step C on the VP salary schedule, which is $12,967. She will advance on that salary schedule one step each subsequent January under this contract, and salary will be prorated for any partial month of service. The Assistant Superintendent Vice President shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the administrative confidential employee group. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not. Let me see here. Oops.
Well, I would welcome a motion to approve this contract. Thank you, Trustee Baker, for your motion.
I'll second.
And Trustee Olson for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Yes, no, wait, we'll call it. The contract has been approved, and Trustee Baker has a comment.
I just wanted to thank Bob Harris for his assistance in keeping us together in the interim.
Yeah, yeah, I think. Bob, you've been a really calming voice coming in in absolutely crazy time. And I think your steady hand and quiet leadership, a good sense of humor. The many interesting things that comes at us in the district has been just absolutely the perfect, perfect person at a very challenging time. So thank you, Trustee Baker, as eloquently stated. And thank you, and congratulations to Dr. Moore. We're really excited to have you here and join us and use all of your wonderful skills here at Napa Valley College. We're really excited to have you and your family join us here in Napa. So moving to our next item is a resolution to establish a supplemental employee retirement program.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Tonight, we are bringing a recommendation for approval for Napa Valley College to enter into contracts with 17 individuals who have expressed interest in participating in our SERP program. This level of participation will help us realize an annual payroll reduction of approximately $1 million. That's an annual approximation over the next five years. We are looking forward to taking steps to address our organizational structure and staffing as a result of your decision this evening. Thank you.
Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, I don't see anybody in the crowd raising their hands. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I would welcome a motion to approve this resolution.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Trustee Rios, for your motion.
Second.
And a second from Trustee Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. And we'll go to another action, Item 9.3, Academic Personnel Status Document. I don't think we need a report on this one. It's pretty self-explanatory. Catherine, do we have any public comment on this?
No, we do not.
I don't see nobody in the crowd. I would welcome a motion for approval.
I'll move.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who was that?
Me.
Thank you, Trustee Kishinev.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trustee Deluna. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The document is approved unanimously. And we will go to Project Management Services Contract Award, Item 12.1, which is an action item.
Thank you, Trustee Dodd. This is a recommendation for an award for Project Management Services for the Student Housing Initiative River Trail Villages here on campus, which is underway now. This service, in contrast to a construction manager, the project manager is a liaison between the institution, the contractor, and what we call the operator, the folks who will actually staff and operate the residential experience at River Trail Village. We went through a, we submitted an RFP, or set out an RFP to the six firms that you approved on the listing last fall. We received three proposals. Three of the proposals, all three were good. And we made a selection to the Vols Company for a couple of reasons. Number one, they were the best value. And number two, they have a unique ability to address not only the liaison needs, but how an institution readies itself to be a 24-hour campus. They are doing this work currently at Santa Rosa, scheduled to open in the fall, excuse me, the summer of '23. They also did this work at OCC, Orange Coast College. They have been open for a few years. They also consult, their firm consults with about 40 community colleges throughout the state, considering student housing on community college campuses. So my recommendation, staff recommendation, is to engage the Vols Company. Are the numbers there, Catherine?
Yeah, they're, I know in the attached, I don't think they're on the cover page. Those numbers are missing.
At a cost of $12,300 per month for a total cost of not to exceed $283,000. I will add that this is not a cost incurred by the college, but is budgeted in the development agreement for the building. So while we may pay a check each month, it will be charged to the building and will be reimbursed by the project fund. But it's a necessary component to take a bit of a load off our current college staff and have the assistance of someone who's very well-versed in this area of bringing college housing onto a community college campus.
Any questions? Trustee Baker?
Yeah, I'm just curious if this group or someone from the group will be participating in the steering committee?
Yes, we have, we have just last month impaneled our implementation team. And the award has a seat at that table, and Frank will be a big player at that table if not leading those meetings. One of our requirements is that they also make periodic reports to the Board of Trustees on progress against not only the building, but about readying the campus for 24-hour occupancy by students.
Thank you, Trustee Baker. Good question. Any other questions? Okay, Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, I've not received any public comment either. Then I would welcome a motion to approve awarding a contract to a Volt Group.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Thank you, Trustee Olson, for your motion, and Trustee Baker, for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it is approved unanimously. Thank you. And moving quickly on to Item 12.2, General Fund Update.
Yes, thank you. This is our regular report of the general fund. We are at, that picture's hiding the percentage. We are at 7/12 of our budget, 58%. Thank you, Trustee Olson. Would you like to give the report?
No.
So when you look at the right-side column, 58% is kind of, is the benchmark number you want to compare to. And that will give you an idea of kind of where we stand relative to what your approved budget is. I will start with the revenues. At our last previous meetings, we had some concerns about how quickly property tax revenues were hitting our ledger, and they have hit at the place where we were last year. So last year, we were at 60% of our revenues received. This year, we are at 60% of our revenues received. Reminder, this is Fund 11. Fund 11 is our unrestricted general fund. We have other funds coming into the college, and Fund 12 are categorical for our student housing program, et cetera. Those aren't reflected here. This is just our unrestricted fund. So moving down that right column again, you'll see that we are generally on track for salaries. I would, I would like to respond to Trustee Baker's question of last week about why we're running a bit of a variance in our classified, in our temporary classified area. A couple of things are occurring there. Number one, we had a little bit of vacation payout above last year. Number two, we have some overtime reflected there for a couple of areas, custodial and police. Those are largely tied to outside groups that are offset by some revenues. So those outside groups require custodial support or police support. They're also paying for it, so you're seeing, you're seeing a little bit of overtime there. So we're running a little bit of last year. I'm not terribly concerned because the offset in revenue is there. I would also add that we're running a little lower in our classified permanent, and so a little lower than budgeted. So again, I don't have tremendous concerns about that. Our total salaries are running at 53% against 58% of our budget and at 59% last year. So those big numbers, 85% of our budget and our salary and benefits, are running below last year. And so we're trending in the right direction. Down to total employee benefits, we're at about 53% as opposed to 61% last year. Our total books and supplies, a smaller number, we're running at 35% of last year, where we were at 59%. That's a smaller dollar number, but trending, trending a little less than last year. I'm not quite sure why. Perhaps we're not buying quite the office products that we once did. But in any event, that's probably something to look at. We need to make sure our classrooms are well-stocked and faculty and staff have the materials they need. Scrolling down, we have our total operating supplies. That next subtotals are running at 54% against 66% last year. And I would just call your attention to the capital outlay number. We're a little better than last month's report. We're at about 111% over. We've done some reclassing there, so we're not quite to where exactly we were last year. We're at 93% as compared to 86% of our budget last year. I would finally call your attention to the bottom of column 8, the blue, where it says $1,007,685,520. We are, we are $1,007 better than we were last year. So while this is a budget, and things happen in budgets, we are trending in a very positive direction. We are, we are looking at an increase of, an increase to 10.3% of our reserves. If we maintain this, it'll jump up dramatically to 10.3%. But I do not want to make a guarantee this is a trend. And we're still a bit early in our budget process, but the trends look positive. I'm certainly entertaining. Any questions?
Any questions, Trustee Baker?
I just wanted to ask about the capital outlay again. I'm assuming that that's, it's not like a monthly expense. It's just like, those are project-based, correct?
That's exactly right. So there's timing there.
So we could either be done, potentially. I don't know.
I think if you, could you put the get budget together for us next year? I think you've got all the answers. That's exactly right. Unlike salaries where you have a payment every month, that's generally predictable. Those kinds of expenses happen episodically. So they could all happen in the first month, and your budget looks like it's way out of whack, but that's really related to the timing of the expense.
Any other questions? Okay, Catherine, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Okay, well, then we will move quickly to 12.3, Estate Budget Update.
Thank you, Trustee Dodd. Catherine, could you open that PowerPoint? I want to give you just a brief overview of the Governor's January budget. Let me preface this by saying it has some impacts on the institution's finances, finances, finances. Thank you. However, recall that we are a community-based budget, largely funded by local property taxes. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but I think a few areas are worth a look at. The Governor presents his budget for the following year always in January. Between January and May, there's lots of jockey going on relative to resetting priorities and negotiations with legislators and lobbying on behalf of folks like the League and the support of public higher education. Then in, there's what's called a May revise, which the Governor comes back and says, here's what we think after January, and then a final signed budget by July 15th, often followed by trailer bills, which modify what they signed in June, excuse me. Let's scroll down, Catherine. The budget proposal for the California Community College is shaped by a multi-year roadmap to California's future. We'll provide you some, some detail about that if you wish. In fact, we'll get it posted to the website. And it builds on existing efforts toward achieving a vision for success articulated by the former chancellor, while establishing some additional expectations for the system over the next several years. So the funding is tied to a vision of the roadmap for California's future and a vision for success. The vision for success is tied to student achievement, addressing the needs of the underrepresented, and providing support for access and success among students in the state. Next slide, please. The key goals and expectations in the roadmap increase collaboration across segments and sectors to enhance timely transfer, improve time to degree certificate, degree and certificate completion, closure of equity gaps, and better alignment of the systems with K-12 and workforce needs. Next slide, please. The key elements of the Governor's budget, at least in January, are an overall budget lower by about 3%. And you've probably seen and read about the projections. There's an anticipated decrease in property taxes and corporate income taxes of about 3%. This proposed new ongoing spending in '23, '24 is primarily related to COLA. We had a question earlier today about COLA. We have some programs that get increased by COLA. They're primarily categorical programs. And so much of the budget increase for community colleges is simply related to COLA for next year. One-time funding of $200 million dedicated to student retention and enrollment. So the state is still seeing a decrease in enrollment and wants to provide financial support and stimulus to outreach efforts and engagement efforts of students to increase enrollments. Retention and enrollment allocation. Retention and enrollment allocation funded with a redirection of twenty-two, twenty-three deferred maintenance funds. Let me spend one moment on this. This year, we received six point two million dollars in scheduled maintenance funds. A big win for all community colleges and certainly for us. The recent trailer bill wants to redirect about one-third of that allocation to next year's retention enrollment funds. So we need to prepare, be prepared to adjust our, our priorities in that scheduled maintenance funding we received this year, uh, to be reallocated next year. So good news for, uh, outreach and retention, not so good news for scheduled maintenance on campus. Next slide, please. I know you can't read this. I don't expect you to. Um, this is posted on the website and it gives you some detail about specific programs and initiatives and how they will be funded uh, in, in the next year's budget. Uh, you'll see that on the right column where the, where the changes occur, they're primarily related to COLA, cost of living allowance, uh, and they're, they're exclusively for us in, in some category programs. By the way, we put this link on our website. Uh, so, uh, if you, if you would, uh, give a few minutes, you want to take a look at that, uh, I would, I would encourage you to do so. Next slide, please. This is a slightly different look. These are policy adjustments, ad policy adjustments and how they're being funded. In the right column, you'll see what the changes are with their, and dollars are anticipated to be very similar to the previous schedule. Most of them are related to, to COLA. You'll see some increase in enrollment and engagement funding, uh, for next year as well. Next slide. Here are planning factors across the state for next year. Cost of living adjustment, eight point one three percent. Uh, a nice number if you're getting it, but, uh, we're not getting, for the, for the most part. Our state lottery funding, um, is expected to remain about level, but that's, uh, to be determined. Our, our block grad funding looks like it's going to, it's going to be about the same. Our, our RSI reimbursement, uh, these are for, um, these are for our side. Um, supplement. But it's our pressure, apprenticeship from a class, thank you, uh, is about the same. Financial aid administration for college promise grant is about the same. And they're, they're remain, they, they remain essentially the same as last year's, uh, budget reflecting, yeah, uh, a stagnant revenue state, uh, in, in the state of California. Next slide, please. In response to the disruptions of COVID nineteen, the whole harmless provision of the state, uh, student centered funding number is extended to twenty-four, twenty-five. This doesn't apply to us until we get to the point, if we ever do, that we become, uh, an apportioned based, uh, institution. We have a little ways to go to get there, so I wouldn't put that on, um, high on your panic list. Uh, starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, a district's twenty-four, twenty-five funding represented in Florida and shift funding, student-centered funding, uh, uh, rates would increase to reflect COLA. But the shift hold harmless provisions would no longer include total computational revenue. These are some technical changes in, uh, apportioned based funding. We do, uh, receive some apportioned funding, um, at, uh, in the unrestricted general fund, but they're fairly small amounts, total maybe two, two million dollars. Next slide, please. These are just dates, just reminders about, uh, statutory, um, deadlines for budget development. I think certainly over the last year or so, we've been, um, we've been talking about these to a great extent with the board. So, uh, and you'll continue, uh, you'll continue to see those. We did, uh, submit our schedule, uh, our budget development schedule to the board last fall. And I think it's the last slide, isn't it, Catherine?
Oh.
No. So our next steps, we need to review the Napa County outlook for property tax revenues and for twenty-three, twenty-four and adjust projections is necessary. We'll talk a little more about projections in a couple of days. We'll assess the impact of the governor's January budget with district revenues and expenditures, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four, repeat such projections in May. And follow the college's budget process and steps as outlined in the college's twenty-three, twenty-four planning and budget development timeline. So these are next steps relative to the data that we're receiving in terms of analyzing what our, our budget will look like going forward. Next slide. Any questions?
I have one question about that. Mind you that the state is proposing to take back. What if we would have spent it?
They haven't given it all to us yet. It's a portion on a, on a monthly basis. We've only received, we received about half of it. But there's a little bit of a dilemma with, with the chancellor's office that they, they have to make these decisions by June when they would have delivered it all. So we, they're careful about that. They won't give it to us until, uh, that trailer bill is addressed, but we have about half of it in hand right now.
Um, I'm trying to reconcile what I heard about the early retirement program. And it seems like your report on Fund Eleven said we're doing pretty well, but the governor's budget is going to be reduced by three percent. I'm trying to figure out how that's going to affect us. It sounded like scheduled maintenance is going to take a hit. I'm not sure what that means. Are, are we, should we be more concerned?
I, I, you know, talking to the finance guy, I'm always concerned. I would, I would, um, give you some, uh, provide you some relief in that the funding from the state from next, for next year's budget for Napa Valley College is a fairly small number. Uh, and will not significantly impact us because we're, we're funded primarily from local property taxes. And those tend to be more stable, uh, a stable source of income than frankly, even the apportioned, uh, in portion districts. Scheduled, scheduled maintenance are funds that the state provides institutions across the state to address their facilities issues and some instructional equipment issues that they otherwise couldn't fund in their budget. Those funds are not reflected in the unrestricted general fund. So the report I just gave you doesn't have those, don't have those numbers because it's a restricted fund, can only be used for those purposes.
So we're not going to be falling short on that?
On, on scheduled maintenance?
Correct.
We're always falling short. Our, our scheduled maintenance backlog is, is way over six million dollars. For most institutions, that's the case, but for an institution of this age, uh, I won't even venture a guess what our, our scheduled maintenance backlog is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Mr. Rios, in kind of with, uh, Rafael, so Trustee Rios's question, have we received for the student housing grant, have we received all of those monies? Uh, have they come through or have they come in, in, in a phased?
Trustee Dodd, same response. About half of it we've received.
Okay.
And we'll be sending some of that over to the project fund, um, pretty soon.
The one we created, yeah.
So that, that's a, that's a promise to them.
Okay. Thank you. Um, thank you very much for the update. We will go to, uh, information item, board policies. This is the first reading of BP thirty-four, thirty-three and sixty-three hundred, uh, which we'll adopt next month. Any, uh, comments? Catherine, do we have any public comment on, on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay. Uh, then, uh, we will move on to our reports. Uh, do we have Ms. Sharma, uh, here on behalf of, uh, ASMBC?
No, I don't see her.
Okay. And I'll move down the list, uh, to Ms. Alexander for Classified Senate. I see you shaking your head. Is Dixie available? It's Larson.
Hi. It's, can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Oh, yeah. I just want to, uh, say, um, I'm driving, so I'm going to make this quick. Um, that I have nothing to report, but I am in the audience listening to everything. So that's all I have.
Thank you much, uh, for, for participating. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Drive safe.
Yeah.
We will move on to administrative confidential, uh, Senate report, uh, Mr. Vanderbilt.
Thank you, President Dodd, uh, members of board. Um, I, I know that Danielle Alexander wanted to be here tonight, but had a personal conflict. Um, I had a sneak preview of her report and it's a good one, expect it next month. Uh, this month's report, I wrote myself without the aid of artificial intelligence. This past month, we, I promise. This past month, we participated in council president's discussions to adopt several new and revised administrative procedures and put on your agenda new board policies, which you just saw a moment ago. The administrative senate is also an integral part in participating in the multi constituency assessment and possible streamlining of AP twenty-four-ten, which is our local equivalent of the federal administrative procedures act that establishes how new and revised policies and procedures are promulgated. In keeping with my introduction of hot topics last month by speaking about artificial intelligence, tonight I'd also like to briefly touch on another important question that is keeping academics, administrators and faculty awake at night. What the heck is happening in Florida? You, you may know that I came here from being an administrator at Palm Beach State College. And I like to say that while it's difficult to upgrade from Palm Beach, I was successful in doing so. You may have seen recent news media coverage about Governor DeSantis's education proposals that include things like eliminate state funding for diversity, equity and inclusion programs, prohibit DEI statements and hiring, ban AP African-American studies, bypass faculty search committees and allow presidents and boards to directly hire faculty without faculty expertise. Reshape New College of Florida, the state's publicly funded liberal arts college. Um, and the first official act of the new board appointed by Governor DeSantis was to fire the president, sorry, Dr. Powell, um, in an effort to morph the college into a more conservative leaning institution. But why talk about Florida and California, which seems so very far away, both geographically and politically? Well, many higher education policies have been piloted in Florida. Florida community colleges were given authority for workforce baccalaureate degrees in two thousand and one. Florida community colleges, um, had, um, AB seven oh five in its genesis there as Senate Bill seventeen twenty, which defunded most math and English remedial courses ten years ago. Florida community colleges started piloting dialed pathways called meta majors eleven years ago. Dohole enrollment is big, as I can attest, having walked across the stage with my daughter to claim her associate's degree eight days before she got her high school diploma. Common course numbering, which is just in the planning stages here, has been in the line in Florida for many years. Along with a legal requirement, the community college credits must be accepted at full year transfer institutions. But these latest efforts seem designed to attack academic freedom and undermine anti-racism work. These folks could be put in charge of national education policy. It's not too difficult to imagine a U.S. Department of Education policy on critical race theory that says you can teach it, but not if your institution processes federal financial aid money. Or the possible federal defunding of support for diversity, edu, equity and inclusion work. Trustees, administrators, faculty and staff all made to keep a cautious eye on this as DEI work is vitally important for the populations that we serve. When faculty and administrators speak regarding concerns about running academic freedom, Florida wins a large. Uh, finally, uh, one item on tonight's agenda that has special significance for me is your approval a little bit ago of the cert. I had planned to retire at the end of my current two-year contract, but after a lot of consideration, decided that I will be leaving after the end of this fiscal year. Travel, rest and other projects. There's never a best time for a departure, but this is a good moment for me personally and professionally. And I hope for the college as well with the transition this year to a new president and within the next few weeks, a transition to a new vice president of academic affairs. I'll do my best to make a smooth handover of my responsibilities. We will remain at Napa where I've become very involved in the community and civic life, and I hope to continue to be engaged with the college. I intend to continue to donate to support our foundation activities and to support our students. I hope to take a class in flawless student and perhaps teach in spring twenty-four or beyond. I'll also remain engaged in the work as he and being and as acting president of the academic senate this, end of this semester. It has been an honor to serve this community and to assist in the work that we do here to train us for the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bob. Um, I understand that Dr. Dahade is not here, so we will move on to, uh, Ms. Iwamoto on behalf of the Faculty Association.
Thank you very much. Good evening, trustees. Um, I wanted to apologize because I was not able to be here at the last Board of Trustees meeting and, and I've not yet had a chance to officially welcome the two new trustees who have come on board. So I wanted to welcome you both tonight. Um, I am also not here, uh, by, uh, the benefit of artificial intelligence and some may debate any intelligence at all, but we will go ahead and go forward. Um, I did want to thank, uh, my, my dean and my colleague here, Bob Vanderbilt, for what he said about, uh, DEI and academic freedom. I did want to, uh, uh, point out that, uh, I've done a few, um, presentations statewide about the sort of boogeyman of critical race theory and how it's being used similar to the attacks on ethnic studies a few years ago in states like Arizona. And I feel privileged to live in a state like California that supports its, uh, its faculty, supports academic freedom and, um, that, but that is fragile. And so you just, uh, want to make sure that we never take that for granted. I wanted to welcome Dr. Maura and congratulate her. I'm very much looking forward to working with her closely as Faculty Association President. And I also wanted to thank Bob Harris for stepping in at a difficult time, at a transition time, and really doing a great job of bridging that gap. Uh, he, he really, um, is a champion for faculty, staff and a great asset to this college. I just recently came from the CCA Winter Conference. That's our CTA Union Conference, where I got a lot of great information about things, um, including part-time healthcare. So, um, I know we just went over the, uh, the state budget. Uh, there has been a great amount of ongoing money allotted to healthcare for our part-time faculty, and I look forward to taking that information to negotiations. I know my, my district negotiator counterparts are in the room here and we're really hoping to do great things for our part-time faculty who as of yet have had absolutely no healthcare options, and I'm really hoping to bring that to them. Uh, speaking of negotiations, we have not met yet this semester. We're trying our hardest. We, um, we are, um, uh, looking for a time to meet. Uh, I think we are going to be meeting next week finally. And so I'm really looking forward to working together to improve the lives of faculty and students here at Napa Valley College. And my dog Maurice, that's high. He's been sitting here this whole time. And, uh, that's all. That is the end of my report. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much, Christie. We will move to, uh, President's Report, President and Cabinet Reports. Dr. Powell.
Good evening, Gorman colleagues. Uh, I just want to start this evening by, um, give an update on our spring enrollments as the census date of February sixth has passed. And so this is the date that is used to count the true enrollment of the college for this semester. And while there may be some ebbs and flows, late acts and starts, drops by students, this number will serve as a basis for the normal figures for the colleges related to the semester. So I say presented on here, I'm going to provide this to, um, Catherine to post because it wasn't quite ready, but I will give you some numbers here. So, uh, enrolled, enrolled credit students receipts in the spring semester is ten thousand, three hundred and two. I'm comparing that to last spring of ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-five. That's a, uh, uh, an increase of one, one oh five percent. Um, it's an increase. So, um, so that's, it's outstanding. Non-credit, uh, this semester is four thirty-eight right now. Uh, spring last year was four forty-four. Those six students make a difference of one point three five percent. But I will say that non-credit mostly is a lot of open entry, open exit. So people come in and this ESL classes are offered more here. So that'll fluctuate a bit. Total seats filled is ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one compared to ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-six last spring. That's a difference of one point six six in, in, in the right direction. The unduplicated headcount mean unique students this semester is four thousand, three hundred and ninety. And last spring is four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven. That's a very modest point three percent. But I would like to add in that, um, we also are offering approximately five to seven percent less sections this semester. So we have pared down the offerings and we continue to look So we have pared down the offerings and we continue to look for the sweet spot. We will continue the process with asynchronous, you know, online hybrid. I gotta use the return. It's not high, it's not high flux anymore. It's high learning anyway. Kathy Gilas, our D Director and Coordinator, will make sure that she will correct me. But anyways, we are trending, it's slow, it's a process. But the increase in enrollment is very modest, but it does represent an increase. And while Cubus continues to work through the afterfet of the cyber tech and the transformation of our technological infrastructure. There have been some outstanding successes in the classrooms, the support provided to students by the faculty, staff and classified professionals. Our strength continues to be our faculty and classroom instruction, counseling in the library. As well as the outstanding services provided by the professionals at student services and all areas of campus provide the valuable and much needed resources to support our students. Excuse me. This is the beginning, and we convened our first meeting in the Pearson Awards Committee. And today with the target of having a mid to late April celebration for the recipients. Trustee Olson is the board representative on the committee, former trustee Michael Baldini, Michael, if you're out there, you're everywhere. He's YouTube big with this, but he's representing the foundation. Dr. T Madison, who is a former, is a former recipient and a student participant. I started this process and, you know, with Dr. Mora coming on, we made transition, but I wanted to, it was important to get that process rolling. And finally, as this is my final Board of Trustees meeting in this current role. I would like to thank the college and college community for the opportunity to serve as the acting vice president of academic affairs for the last seven months. I'm honored to have had the privilege to serve in this capacity, and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Mora to continue the work of shaping the campus's offerings. And the services as we move into the next academic year and beyond. My experience over the last seven months have provided me with a deeper understanding and different perspective of many areas of the campus and the campus community. And understanding and perspective that will shape and guide my future work. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and community, and just want to take a quick second to honor my, my dear colleague, Acting VP Harris. I know we will continue to build together in many, many capacities, so I got you. And I appreciate everything we've, we've done. So I wanted to start off by, by first off honoring that we are in Black History Month, so I want to appreciate the contributions of our African American. Community members, our students, our staff, our faculty, administrators around the really important work that, that they've done and impacts they've made in Napa Valley College. So thank you, and at the same time recognizing that there's a lot of work we still need to do to really make sure that we celebrate and honor all of our communities. But in particular, our, our black community, African American community. So with that said, let me put on the glasses. I want to start off by recognizing that the Emoja community celebrated, celebrated the Black History Month. This, this is celebrating Black History Month, and they've been pretty busy in conjunction with campus community. Our Emoja learning community is holding several events to highlight the efforts of African Americans, both past and present. On February first, our own faculty member Jan Stickman opened the month with an intention focusing on the theme of resistance. This is a concert throughout the state. Emoja has engaged in other activities, including a variety of board games, a group project assembling a Maya Angelou puzzle. A game of Black Jeopardy where prizes were given to whomever had the most correct answers. Emoja held an open house, which I'm going to show a couple pictures here in a second, with students in the Puente Project. As well as faculty, administrators, staff and other students and our very own Board of Trustees President Jeff Dodd was, was present for us. Thank you for being there. Food was provided, lots of dialogue around where African Americans see themselves today. And asking important questions as have things really changed or are they changing? Dr. T Madison, Professor of Communication Studies, Communication Studies Coordinator and Emoja Mentor Me. Coordinator performed three shows in a performing arts center called Brand New Shoes. The Emoja program wants to thank all who came out part of these festivities. Black History Month is not over. There are still events happening, so actually Catherine, if you could click on the images and flyers. Just wanted to show to the board and to the community some of the activities. Hopefully that pops up. But just one of the flyers from the Black History Month, the Emoja Open House, if you scroll down. And some pictures there, some of the activities you can see there, an activity with the Puente students and the Emojist students coming together during the open house. And there's a couple of students there, professor. A great picture right there. That might be more, yes, and here's a, wanted to just lift this up here around the work. Professor T Madison has been doing her presentation sheet around Brand New Shoes, so want to honor them and their, their important work. So we move on to the next. Okay, moving on to, to speak now about a really, really important activity that, that's happened here on campus. In particular to our Dreamers and really celebrating what is now a Dream Center here on campus in Room eight forty one. The opening of the Puente slash Dream Center, it's a historical moment for Napa Valley College. So Dreamers really is a space for, for students who are undocumented to come and receive support and services. And really be embraced by the location that will, will help them navigate Napa Valley College. So the Puente Dream Center space intentionally shared with the Puente Project, all staff in a, in the space are ready to serve both Puente and Dreamers alike. We have soft opening on, of the space, the students on February seventh, Dreamers, so they can become familiar with the space and its services. We had an opening for staff on February fifteenth, just yesterday. Staff can get a feel for space, know where to block Dreamers and potential Puente students as well. So Puente Dream Center is a safe space where Dreamers and Puente students can go to receive services and be referred to resources specifically for them. As well as space to gather, to organize, study, to keep, to socialize. The hours of the space are Monday through Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from nine to five P M. Thank you Associate Dean Lisa Alcántara as Student Specialist, Yubert Lutamitas, for your work to get that space ready. And there's a picture of the flyer, very powerful activity that they had yesterday and opportunity for, for staff to come and build community. And just really see the space, experience this space. I was sharing with Dr. Powell that I actually kind of, I like hanging out there, it's lots, lots, it's got a really good vibe, so hopefully you can come, you can go by and check it out. And when I move on now to the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center, I just got to put some numbers up for you to take a look to see the impact the Welcome Center has had on our campus. They've, since the beginning of the semester, they've impacted two thousand one hundred and eighty eight students. And you can see how, now I'm talking about with two staff and student workers. So they've been working really hard to, to respond to voicemails, emails, on the application process, the inquiries and then the phone calls. So Welcome Centers are really, really key and important space for our campuses. Often the first connection for many of our community members. So the work they've been doing is to be really applauded. Specifically, I want to thank Brendan Rodriguez, Janet Duarte and team for the important work they've done to serve our students. And when we move on to the very last piece here, and this is a meet and greet, so you are all welcome. So Board of Trustees and community, you are welcome to a meet and greet with, open house with Napa Valley College counselors. This is happening in the counseling hallway in Room thirteen forty nine or hallway thirteen thirty nine on February twenty first. From ten to twelve and the twenty second from one to three. Goal of this event is to build community and create connections with our students and our campus. So it's been an excellent opportunity to learn about counseling services in Napa Valley College and maybe counseling appointment. So that is the goal, get students to the space, welcome them, connect with them, give them some food. So we will have some goodies there as well as with our staff. So looking forward to that event, and actually I do have, I always bring some handouts for you. I have, I have some handouts for you around that, so hopefully you can, you can join us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Grue. Just briefly, I'll cover a few, a few points, but in the meantime, Catherine, can you pull up the link to the housing camera at the bottom of that report? And while you're going there, let me just give you a few highlights in the report. We touched on the twenty two, twenty three budget. I did want to share with you that we, we do have some unanticipated costs. That I've recommended to Dr. Powell that we, we submit as a budget adjustment to the board as early as March. We don't anticipate these to make a significant change in our, in our budget performance, but believe it might be more transparent. It would be more transparent just to share them with you as a budget adjustment, so you can look forward to that in the, in the coming months. Institutional technology, we continue to look at some managed services opportunities. And, and I'll be meeting with one of those, one of those firms next Friday, I believe. Dr. Powell has insisted that if he's available, he'd join me to move this along. But we are looking at a solution that number one provides a continuity for R I T systems. Improves our security and provides a robust management approach to I T services on campus. So you should look forward to hearing more about that. We've recently released an R F P, a request for proposal for bookstore services. The Barnes and Noble contract will conclude in June or July, if I'm not mistaken. So we will have a recommendation about a new service provider or a service provider at as early as the March meeting. Student housing update. There it is. It's a little dark out there now, but I, I think trustee Iverson can probably give a pretty good report. He keeps a close eye on what we're doing over there. There are walls going up and, and they're, they're making some good progress there. I will share with you that the developer filed a force majeure. Or effectively an act of God, disclosure because of the rain event that caused a delay in a fifteen day delay in the schedule. I'm not quite sure if that puts us fifteen days behind, but we'll have a, what we call a workout meeting in the very near future to determine. To solve for where we are today and our need to open on time, so we'll provide that report to you in the near term. I did want to, on a facilities level, I would share with you that, that the swimming pool is about to reopen. And it looks good, certainly much better than it did three or four months ago. And the future of the pool, we're looking at in terms of how we can, how we can better serve the larger community with that, with that facility. So those discussions are continuing and we'll have more information about that moving forward. Well, that would conclude my report.
I would just like to welcome Dr. Mora to Napa Valley College. We're looking forward to working with you. And I want to take this opportunity to really thank a colleague and now friend. For your time in this role. You've made in many ways my job a lot easier, so thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you've done in the past several months. Thank you.
Thank you, Cabinet. I just have a few, few updates. First off, I would like to join the, the thank yous with, you know, to my colleague. Now I would consider dear friend as well, Mr. Harris, Bob Harris, thank you so much for your leadership, for your commitment, dedication to the institution to step up. Not just to step into the acting VP role, but also to do that while maintaining your role as senior dean. Some people don't recognize or really acknowledge that, that, you know, this was in addition to your regular day to day responsibilities. At a time at the college where we were experiencing significant change and a lot of work that we needed to do in some very sensitive areas. I am very appreciative for your leadership, for your willingness and commitment to step up, and I owe you at least a lunch. And a lot more, so more to come there. I would also like to extend thank you or rather welcome to Dr. Mora. And thank you for, you know, your willingness to step into this leadership role and position at Napa Valley College at this time. Really looking forward to working with you in the coming months and years and, you know, helping to make your time at Napa productive. And, and just a wonderful experience for all. Just a couple of things that, that I've been doing, I'd like to update everyone on. I did have the chance to speak at the Napa's Black History Month event on Saturday. Thank you trustee Olson for the invitation. That was a very fun event. It was incredibly well attended. You know, the pastor actually came in and politely encouraged everyone to migrate to the overflow room. Because there were so many chairs that we were concerned it might have been a fire code violation. But it was a great event, very well attended, and I very much appreciated the chance to, to meet some folks from the community and to share some powerful words. That actually resonated a lot with what Bob, Bob V, what you shared with respect to, you know, some concerns around the direction of academic freedom. Which were a theme that was, I think, prevalent in, in the, of the speech that I shared. Last thing, I just want to give an update on the AP twenty four ten work group. You'll recall this is the work group that we convened to really redesign our process to approve our board policies and administrative procedures. We made tremendous progress in our first session. We met here about three weeks ago and got through pretty much about sixty, seventy percent of revised process. And now we're at the point where we're just performing some cleanup and, you know, really kind of typing up. Just areas that we think need more clarification around how we approve our, our policies and procedures. And would really like to extend my sincerest thanks to the members of that work group. We have representatives from all four constituent groups, our students, our faculty, our classes, and our administrative senates. And so they've done tremendous work in a very short period of time. And I think this models the, the type of collaboration and the spirit of collegiality and creativity that really is becoming to typify what we do here at Napa Valley College. So thank you all for your, your work there, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. We'll go to Standing Committee and other appointment reports. Anything from DOS Foundation, trusted Lina? I think so. Vidiculture and Winery Foundation.
Yes, we met yesterday and a lot of things going on there, including, I think, the, trying to finish up the plans for the new facility. They're working on plans, marketing plans for the wine and. New release of the wine for the wine club is, is coming up, I guess, this month new to the members of the wine club that's going out. They will be, they're putting back together the May Fair. The, we've kind of a release party for members of the, the community, of the club members at the winery. Attended a couple of those a few years ago when they were being done, but they're bringing that back. A lot going on with the vineyard being pulled out and trying to source some grapes for this, this vintage. So there's been a whole redesign, a kind of rebranding with changing the label, which, you know, I thought being on this, this board, there would be samples brought to every meeting. But I was wrong. I mean, it would have been great to share the new label with you, but it looks really good. You know, the, the red wines have a, a black label with a gold, you know, kind of a lost line of the, the winery. So it looks a lot more modern and just much better than in previous label. There was, there were some comments about something that was somewhat concerning. I think it was Paul Wagner, who's on the board, who was explaining how their union is kind of a. I call it a weak spot or something in, in the program, but we have three, three degrees, our certificates in the, in the program. The Vidiculture, Technology and Marketing. But, well, he was explaining that for the marketing program, it's very difficult for the students to actually complete that. Because it was a lack of instruction or courses to, to be, for the students to be able to complete that in a timely manner. So I thought that was a bit concerning and maybe something we can look at to see what's, what the issue is and how it can be corrected. Obviously, if we're going to have a certificate program, want the students to be able to do it, do it on time, so that they can move on. Yeah, just like we're doing with every other area and all other degrees so that the time to completion is, is in line with the standards and set. So that if, if, I was a little surprised, I thought Kyle and Michael, when he was there, gave me a, a hard time. So he was the only board member, he's not a member of the club, and I had mentioned that. I think it's Phil who's the operations.
Yeah.
Winey operations, he said, well, we don't really have a club. Uh Winey Operations. He said, well, we don't really have a club. I said, well, wait a minute, what do you mean? I got a hard time because they said I wasn't in the club. Um so I guess it's private, and I'm just, I'm still out. But um I did take my sign up sheet and encourage all of you, if you're not, because I'm confused about who is and who is not now, if you're not in the club, to join the club. There is a club. Now, are you just being nice to? So I I am joining the club and you've got an option of getting six bottles of Cerner whole case uh different discounts. So um great way to support program the students. So that is my report.
Thank you, trustee Rios. And it's interesting to note about the the scheduling, because we know from the Mexican-American Vintners Association about, I think, scheduling for our viticulture classes. I've heard kind of a similar concern, especially for night classes.
Correct. Just some other um different schedules for those people who work, you know, typically very early, you know, seven o'clock in the morning to three, four o'clock uh who are interested and members of the uh Mexican-American Vintners Association who, you know, some are wine owner, vineyard managers, vineyard owners, that have employees who expressed interest. And uh those organizations expressed interest in in helping those employees, but not being able to sign up for the classes because of the scheduling.
Yeah.
Uh which is something um that I know is being looked at by by the program.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh audit and finance, uh nothing to report. Um I know Real Property is meeting on February twenty-second next week. I think we heard McPherson uh uh St. Louis Award for Minister Harris was sharing that news. It's it's coming. Um and uh assuming the same for uh Ed Shank Award. Um and you know, from the College Foundation, uh let's see, a couple of points, I think, getting ready for um uh sending down applications for for scholarships, uh foundation grant scholarships, and then a big push about a capital campaign associated with the um Wine Spectator, Spectator Education Center um Hospitality Center. Um and so I think, yeah, there's some other other things to to know about that, but there's uh those are the main focal points. I think I missed on that, Dr. Powell. Okay, okay, here we go. Uh let's see, future agenda item requests.
Yes. Um is my report isn't until the next agenda item, but I met with one of my constituents in American Canyon.
Sorry.
This is a future agenda.
Okay, well, Catherine, do we have, do we have anything on, I'm sorry to point at you. Uh do we have uh anything uh to to show regarding what we have on our agenda item request? No, I should have asked you about that before.
There was the solar panels that was requested. A report on the solar panels was requested by trustee Baldini. Trustor trustee Baker requested um.
Financial policies.
How to build, building the reserves.
Yep.
And then there's uh still the land acknowledgement, which uh I believe is still under construction.
Right, right. Hey, trustee Kishinov.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to speak editor. Um I met with one of the community leaders in my area, American Canyon. Um his name is Arvin Nishal. He said that he put, he in the past hosted a laughing yoga class here at the college and also a color festival. He's descended, he's from India. Yeah, color festival, a holy color festival. Um and I I printed out a picture of what that looked like in American Canyon when I went a few years ago to his color festival. Um so I wanted to ask to put that on the agenda for he was to come here and and put on a presentation to um present that with us. I think that would be educational for our community. It would connect the community with the college more, uh maybe be more welcoming, expose people to other cultures. And it's a fun, a fun festival. And and I think that some people may be concerned that this powder is not going to be safe. But I can assure you that there are all kinds of little kids at these festivals and I've never seen any problem.
Maybe instead of maybe an agenda, I'm not uh dismissing that, but maybe just coordinating some sort of discussion with maybe Dr. Muntzami or or something like that about.
Yeah, I think there's any opportunity we have to engage and connect better uh with our community partners, specifically in the D E I space, we want to take advantage. So perhaps we could talk after the meeting and connect you with our senior dean in that area.
Okay, great. Any other future agenda item requests? Okay, uh then we will go on to board reports. Um so your student trustee uh left us for um of his physics class. Um and uh we will go to trustee Olson.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to follow up a little bit and thank Dr. Powell for um coming to our event on Saturday. It was our sixth annual Black History Month event. I've been involved um since year two. And as Dr. Powell mentioned, it was standing room only. I think we had around three hundred people there, a really diverse crowd in ethnicity, race, and also age and gender and uh activities for everyone. Um and I just really um respected your message that you give the community. We came up with a theme that um, you know, we want to educate and empower the next generation of black leaders, um black resistance being through education. And I loved your message. Dr. Powell did a great job. Um I will have a recording of the presentation I can share with everyone after the fact. Um I would love to see this sort of uh work continue in collaborating with the with the community and Napa Valley College around um black history. We're gonna, we're starting to plan already a Juneteenth event and and do more year-round activities. So I'd love to um connect with the college and what they're doing, what the emoji club is doing specifically um in our event. So thank you again.
Thank you. Uh trustee Deluna.
Um so we had our uh annual, the annual conference for the C C L C that we went to in Ja- in January. I hope you all enjoyed it. Um it was a great experience for me, being my first year on the board um of the C C C T and um having just a say in what is presented. So we had really great feedback. Um we had a lot of people stay throughout the legislative conference, which um I'm hoping maybe some of us could do next year as well. And I know um we had uh Dr. Moon Sami, I think, was there, but I'm not sure if anybody else was there. So it'd be great to hear from them about um what they learned or what they think we need, we could focus on. Um also, uh we want, I just wanted to also plug the Mariachi Festival. If you don't have your tickets, please get your tickets and we'll see you there. And there's still sponsorship opportunities available. And um yeah, I think that's all. Looking forward to our retreat on Saturday.
Trustee Iverson.
I don't have a report this evening, but I wanted to thank Bob Harris for all you've done in this position. So we'll mess you up here.
Uh trustee Kishinov.
Um the last meeting, we went to a a trustee workshop in Sacramento where it was uh learned a little bit and got to mingle with other trustees from around the state. And then I came home with a massive cold. That was, that was actually, it wasn't COVID, but it was worse than the COVID I had when I did have COVID. And my hearing still hasn't quite recovered in more than here. Um but I am taking antibiotics, don't worry. Um but since I have gotten better, uh I have been trying to connect around my area with constituents, community leaders. I met with the previous holder of this seat, um Beth Goff, who had a discussion. And now I'm even more glad that you guys are so great. Um and Mr. Michelle, I wasn't quite, I went to the high school today, but I wasn't quite able to connect with the principal yet. And I think that that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kishinov. Trustee Rios.
Well, I also attended the conference. Um and uh I mean, that's it's great in I've been now several years. And while loving is the same, there are always updates. It's always something, something new to learn. Uh but I did appreciate something that else was that it gave us an opportunity to to connect outside of this very limited, you know, uh space uh where we usually see each other. So especially getting to talk to new trustees, um I thought that was uh that was great. And so getting to know each other a little better, um I think it all helps us work better together. So that's all.
Trustee Baker.
Thank you. Yeah, I I got to go to the conference for about five minutes. So not long, but uh enjoyed it, the little bit that I did get to go to. I had to go to an employee appreciation event that same evening. So did not get to hang out with you all afterwards. And it's very disappointed to miss that. And I'm also disappointed to find out that employee appreciation is always on that weekend. So I don't know what I'll do next year. So we'll figure that out. Um just uh wanted to uh to thank Mr. Vanderwold for your comments about Florida. Um I would say that school and public libraries are also watching carefully, not just Florida, but lots of places across the country. And I would say also uh your compatriots in K to twelve are also suffering um the results of some of the actions that are happening. And um I think it's nice to think that we're insulated here in California, but in the words of Matt I movie Moody, constant vigilance is what we have to have. And um so and in that vein, uh I wanted to invite um any of you who are available next Wednesday, if you'd like to come down to Benicia. Uh the Benicia Public Library is starting a new program that we've called, we're calling Viabcheck. So uh vibe standing for values, inclusion, belonging and equity. And we are going to uh every every other month tackle a different topic. And our first topic is education. And so next week, we will be talking about what does, what do we value in public education? What does it mean to belong in the classroom? What does it mean when we talk about equity in terms of public education? So hope that you can join us for that if you'd like to. It's at seven o'clock at Benicia Public Library next Wednesday.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Uh maybe just one, one call, a little bit on the somber night. It's always good, I think, to reflect on when we've lost uh people in the Napa Valley College community. And um this one for me is is a little bit close to home, but one of my very good friends, he lost his mom, um who is a teacher, a French and Spanish teacher here for, I don't know, a number of years, um well over a decade. Uh Anne Marie McGill got, I don't know if he has a record, recognize that she thinks she stopped teaching here uh maybe seven, eight, nine years ago plus. Um but uh yeah, taught French and Spanish here. Um it was really amazing. A bright woman, really encouraging to me, you know, growing up, I mean, came from a really tough background, but got a Fulbright scholarship, studied the Sorbonne, really just well accomplished, but totally dedicated her life to education. I mean, fifty years, combination of vintage high school here at the college and Dominican too. Um so just wanted to to recognize her. And um I move on to um announcement of of future meetings is um March sixteenth is our next regular meeting. I know we have our retreat um uh upcoming on the Saturday. Um and uh yeah, so that's it. We will adjourn at um, I don't know what time it is. Excuse me, I'm going to tell you actually, it's six fifty-two. Thank you, guys.